To see what my phone looks like. Service.
You can connect to wifi here.
I'm okay right now.
US Cellular.
Yeah, I would. The new place we bought is. Only fifteen minutes out of Sisters. But there's no service. Like. People must be down with this. It's a really good product. It's expensive. Has anyone? Yeah.
Brandon, yep.
But you guys have sent me.
Yeah.
I mean, it is, it's expensive at the downside of this. Cause my only other option is. You know, you just don't get. Working. I don't know how you guys want to kick things off.
Would you just wanna start by announcing who you are and?
Sure, yeah, I can start. So I'm Michael Casey and I work for a group called the Theodore Roosevelt Conservation Partnership. I manage our Northwest Region, which is Idaho, Washington, Oregon. Although I have a preference for Oregon. And our group is a national nonprofit that's focused on guaranteeing all Americans quality places to hunt fish. We're based in Washington DC. And we started around two thousand and two with the idea that there's a lot of groups that are wearing camel hats in DC, but. We're not all necessarily working together in today's world. We found it in our best interest to start the partnership in order to kind of work together with a lot of different hunting, angling and conservation groups to find. Bipartisan solutions in Congress and then since time has expanded. To where we have staff in ten western states who work on mostly public lands issues, but also farm bill work. And private lands conservation as well as water. Issues. And a lot of my work is around public lands and I worked with Senator Merkley, Senator Wyden, Congressman Benz. And others on some public plans bills like this Sutton Mountain proposal. And Senator Merkley wanted me to kind of come and. Just have a conversation with you guys today and was able to invite Congressman Spencer's staff. To talk more with the city council about this proposal and. Just sort of use this as a brainstorming session for talking about what the bill would do, you know, what we like about the bill, what we don't like about the bill, and then taking that back to Senator. And Congressman Benson's staff to see if there might be some sort of. Bills, cause it, you know, in Congress, you have to have a bill that, you know, is introduced in the Senate and then has to be introduced in the House. And they have to kind of coalesce together to get merged out and passed to the President's desk. And so. I guess that's.
Patty Verbivannick, Councilor. Council President. I'm Krista Miller, City Clerk.
And I'm saved along with Congressman Benson's office. I cover the eastern region for his office and also work on. The natural resource casework for District Two.
Can you kind of tell us a little bit about? What you do? Your role?
So as an eastern organ field representative, I go out and be. I do meetings on behalf of the Congressman. Obviously, he has. A ton of things that he does, so I step into that role and I record. Everything that goes on, I bring that back to the office, I talk to the chief of staff, I kind of let. On a basic point, let the Congressman know what's going on in the district. What, what has transpired? Exactly. To that extent, on a casework side, that involves congressional inquiries, so. If a citizen or constituent has an issue at the federal agency under the natural resource framework. I would oversee that case for. That individual and helping them. Common understanding or finding a solution to the problem that they have with the federal agency and then discussing that with our team in DC. So mostly what I do is facilitate what's going on in eastern Oregon to our team.
Yeah, thanks for being here.
I don't.
Yeah. It's actually. Pretty straightforward. Some. Yeah, I know, getting out of here maybe give me a different story, because it was wet roads, so. Well, I don't know if you guys just wanna open up, I kind of put some notes together on the framework of the bill. I thought I could just run through that for ten or fifteen minutes and. Hit the high points and you guys all kind of had a copy of it, so hopefully. You're able to at least read through it. I know it's a bill and it's sort of confusing why.
It is the same one.
This is, this one right here.
It's the one that I shared, it's, yes, it's the latest bill that I have seen from Senator Merkley as of February twenty third. And. This bill, so just to be clear, this bill is for the hundred and eighteenth session, which started in January. And we'll go through for two, so the sessions run for two years and. It has not been introduced yet, in part because we wanted to make sure we had this meeting. And other meetings to make sure we can sort of. Address any comments or questions or concerns and try to meet agreement. To make the bill as good as it could be, both local communities and also. For the economic and environmental sort of aspects of the bill. So the bill has nine different sections. The first section is the purpose and need for the bill, which essentially is to. Yeah, if you wanna. So the very, the bold is where the sections are, so it would be in bold, there you go, section one.
And you said what section?
So section one is a short title. Which is a long name for what will be sort of a wildfire resiliency economic enhancement act. And then section two is definitions. So we can sort of skip through those. I would just say the one question I have on this bill that I would like to talk more about with the Senator is. The, if you go to the, sorry, if you go to the definitions part again, there's something called passive restoration. Passive habitat management. And, and this is meant for when we talk about the upper unit. And I'm curious what, I would like some examples of what passive habitat management looks like. Cause it's the, you know, if you read through that, it means those actions that are proposed or meant to address degraded or non-functioning resource conditions. Expected to improve ecological health. And that's great, but I just don't know exactly, I'm trying to think of what a passive restoration is.
Now, is that in reference to the land that we would be acquiring or?
No. So that goes to the other portion, which. That's just the one thing I've known on definitions. Section three is the establishment of the monument. And the establishment of the monument. Is kind of a, this is the biggest bulk of the sections and what it does is it breaks, I didn't send you guys that map, so hopefully you guys were able to take a look at that, I skipped. But maybe we should pass that around before I talk to you more. Or we can look at it there too on the screen, that's. Thanks for printing it out.
I, yeah, that was the only copy I could get, my printer, of course, had to.
I work at home and I think the biggest. Time-stuck technological.
Yep. Yep.
Whether they can dry out, have used it forever or whatever, it's not connected to the internet.
Yep.
So section three is the establishment of the monument and a couple of highlights to talk about here is. There is a lower unit and an upper unit and in the map here, you can see the upper unit is the red. With the dots and the lower unit is the green slash. Yellow colored stuff. And. Upper management is that passive habitat restoration and more like non-mechanized primitive recreation. So anything in that, and, and this is sort of around like ecological health of this region as a whole, because the upper unit is sort of. A little more wilderness-esque, you know, it's all that WSA country and Sutton and it's high country, if you will, or like the. The lesser. Impacted stuff like Dead Dog, I mean hardly. I never heard anyone ask, but it's, it's a tough place to access. And same thing with some of that deeper country on Pat's Cabin side. And so that would be managed for passive habitat management and for. Primitive recreation, since. And along with wildlife habitat and those kind of things, whereas the lower unit. Would be managed for the term active habitat management, which is the things we more traditionally think of where we could do temporary roads or. Wildfires and juniper encroachment treatments and invasive annual grasses with herbicide and all the rest. And. The, the purpose of the, of the. Monument is to conserve, protect and manage long-term wildlife, plant integrity, Sutton Mountain and surrounding area. For the benefit of. Present and future generations. There's six different objectives for the National Monument. One is cultural and paleontological resources. Two is for scientific and educational resources. Three is the maintenance of sustainable grazing. Four is the promotion of recreational, historic and cultural uses of the land. Five ensures the conservation and protection of ecological processes. And six is a focus on the restoration of wildfire resiliency for the monument. Within those objectives and within the monument. So this would designate the monument, but it doesn't really dictate the overarching management, other than sort of like these lower, upper. So they put sidebars on things, but largely what would create the management is the, the reference in the bill to create. For the BLM to start a management plan within three years of the designation of the monument. And that management plan would have to. Describe appropriate uses for upper and lower. It would include an assessment of ecological conditions, including juniper encroachment. At its current rate and the impacts of that juniper encroachment. It would look at science-based habitat restoration options to address that would reduce wildfire, restore native vegetation communities. Include a focus on removal of invasive annuals and juniper in the lower unit. Would include. A list of habitat restoration opportunities that prioritize restoration, the maintenance, the wild characteristics of the unit. Including the riparian conservation bridge creek. It includes recreation enhancement with new and expanded recreation opportunities in the lower unit. And so the lower unit would include a focus on. Motor and non-motorized recreation, so the lower unit could, could really think about. You know. In my mind, I'm thinking like OHB to the extent that there is existing roads or rentals out there. As well as mountain bike trail, right? Things like that, you guys would. Probably benefit from. And then also enhance the non-motorized and recreational primitive reg in the upper unit. It would designate a passive habitat man. For the upper unit. Other things in the, in the management plan is that it would include a comprehensive travel management plan. And. Wildfire plan, so develop a wildfire risk assessment and a wildfire mitigation plan. And. Okay. See, so within the travel management plan. It stipulates that, you know, that needs to be developed, but there's some sidebars to that that says no motor, no motor or mechanized use in the upper unit. No off-road motor vehicle travel in the, in the monument. And no new road construction, so you could have temporary roads for juniper removal and that kind of thing in the lower unit. But no new road construction permanent. That does not apply to non-motorized trails and it does not apply to reasonable access for existing private land. Then we're going on here to talk about grazing. So grazing would be allowed to continue subject to existing law and. I think that's about it. There's also something in here that would. Include an option for voluntary permit relinquishment. You guys ever heard of that term? So historically on BLM managed grazing allotments. Permits cannot be. Permits cannot be retired. Let's say at least like a base property owner has a grazing permit of public lands and they no longer want to graze. That grazing allotment permit will be transferred to another willing buyer. And so those grazing. Permits are not allowed to sort of like be retired for permanent use and so. You'll theoretically, you would theoretically always continue grazing unless there's some reason to not. So this bill specifically allows for voluntary permit relinquishment, which means that if there's a willing landowner who has a grazing permit. Who no longer wants to graze. There is an opportunity for them to. Have a willing seller come or willing buyer come and buy that permit and permanently retire or. So they can retire all grazing AUMs or they can retire some, right? So they could just say, hey, I don't wanna graze any cows. I wanna reduce my AUMs by twenty-five percent. And somebody could come and buy that twenty-five percent. And the BLM would permanently reduce that grazing level. So that's an option in there, it's voluntary, so it doesn't mean it's gonna happen, it just means that there's. Opportunities for folks to do that if they want.
So. Once you start that though, then it's hard to go back, right? Like, once you give up grazing or. Start, start messing around with that, then.
I believe so, yeah, I think.
Once you lower your amount, they're like, yes, thank you.
I don't remember, I didn't write down page numbers, did you look under grazing? Oh, here it is. So if you go down a little further, I think it says. So go down one more page. Termination. Terminated grazing permit release. Sure, terminate and degrades and other names, everybody. Yeah.
Right, but if you're talking about a transfer or a conveyance of the permit, somebody else is buying. Those AUMs and that's not a. Ending the.
Nope, so the, the, let's say somebody. I don't know, the only grazer that I know of there is the Papes. Let's say the Papes would like to. No longer graze on the side. They could either tell the BLM that they would like to. You know. Do it the traditional way, right? So they have, the, the landowner still has the option. They can either tell the BLM that they would like to no longer use the permit and they offer it back to the BLM. Or they could work with a willing buyer. And have them buy that grazing permit and permanently retire. So they kind of have, there's still an option there for the landowner to see what's best for them.
So when you say permanently retire, say ABC ran by Papes. They permanently retire when we're BLM. Unless it's permanently retired.
Yeah, who gets the permanent?
Nobody can ever get grace on that property.
That's right, and so I, I have not, so like. The only. You know, I'm not an expert on this many, but I don't like the escalante, they offer a voluntary permanent relinquishment. Cause. Sometimes folks would like to get out of the business and they can sometimes get more money from a willing buyer. Than BLM would offer. I don't think that, actually, I don't think they get any money if they retire the permit. Do they? If it goes back to BLM? So I don't know why you'd ever really do that, but if. If you do wanna not graze there anymore, it just goes back. The BLM reinitiates a new lease to somebody else. So the permutee that removes their grazing from public lands doesn't get any benefit financially. But if they have this voluntary grazing allotment retirement option, the permutee would then actually financially be compensated. For. No longer graze. Does that make sense?
It does, except for I. I don't see where that is beneficial to our.
I don't think there's, there may be.
Other than, yes, you can split it up and, and that, but let's say a ranch has a bad year. And they don't, they're not gonna run as many cows or maybe there's no grass up there and they gotta do something else, but they still have to maintain. The land, and so I see the benefit of being able to transfer part or some of that. But then maybe the next year, they're like, well, you know, we, we caved, you know, we're close to home and now we have, there's more grass out there. It, it doesn't seem like, it seems like once they you downsize and give that control back to BLM, there is no longer. Control.
So. And I know I'm walking in on this kind of at the wrong spot, but. What I understand, what we're trying to say is. Like somebody could come along and say, I want this area to be. Not. Let's say I'm. From. I don't know, San Francisco, I live here, I wanna see that grazed, I go to Papes and say, I'll triple. Whatever. You're making on there. When you're grazing, and I'll retire. Yes, but if I'm a rancher from Quickenham and I go to Papes and say, I'll pay triple, he's still grazing. Or once it transfers ownership, it's no longer grazing. If it gets through the process here of voluntary. And the permutee is paid. By the private entity group over in the San Francisco region. Be retirees, no longer. But if you could go in.
As another rancher.
As another rancher and tell the Papes you really want that permit. I guess in a weird way, it's sort of like. Like it's competition.
They can sell me those grazing.
They can sell you those AUMs, I don't understand. Well, I mean, I just don't understand what the legality requirements are, like. I'm like getting out of my step of.
I guess what I'm asking is like, if they do sell to someone.
It's, it's definitely automatically retired, it's like that. The way, if they don't. Right, but if they just sell it. It, it's not even sale, I think it's just no longer great.
You're saying it does.
There is, I don't think there's a. To no longer graze the public lands. I don't think the BLM compensates you for that.
No, that's not, that's not, that's never part of.
So pretty much what this, this allows is for, like you're saying, individuals to permanently remove. The grazing on these allotments. If. They so choose to do that. And that's one, once that is signed, nobody in the future. Can go and say, we're gonna graze, it's done.
Right.
So if, if. Under that, if an individual from San Francisco were to buy, it doesn't matter if. A hundred years from now, somebody wants it, it's done.
So if you're an advocacy group and you go and purchase those.
Yep.
And now you, cause you don't want grazing, then you can say, thank you very much, and now there's no more grazing for that.
Correct, but I do think it's important, remember this is wrong. Yeah, so this is not like imminent.
Right.
Yes.
Well, right, but for the right amount of money, it's the most volatile, right? And.
It kind of puts a free market on the idea.
And grazing permits are essentially. Are like grazing permits. Passed down generation from generation. Tell that individual which is that control of that command is essentially owned. By that individual. Unless, of course, they went against the laws of the permit and then that could be relinquished from them. But this essentially. Permits are like when the BLM bids out a permit, let's say on the Willau Whitman. Or somewhere that is still. It's a bidding process, individuals from. New York could, if they are gonna have cattle and grazing. Could bid on that, right? So this is.
When it's, but it's. If. You can't have non-use for grazing law, right? So you couldn't have the same San Francisco, you don't buy that. A lot. If the Papes relinquish their, not voluntarily relinquish, but just if they just didn't wanna graze. Part of the stipulation of the purchase of the new allotment. And the bidding process is that it can't go into non-use for more than X. And so if that person, so you could theoretically, the San Francisco person buy that. A lot and outbid everyone else. But if they didn't use it for five years, the BLM would then relinquish it from them because they weren't following the. The grazing rights or whatever you call it.
So then it says, generally, you must graze.
There's, it's a real fluffy area, but yeah, it's, at some level you have to graze.
Or play a special interest in changing my.
That's all I understand, shed it down.
This, under most grazing permits, but. This is an act of Congress, so this would be passed under these, these grazing permits would then essentially, yes, you could do. I would. But the landowners would have to agree to sell to that individual, that in, that's, I mean. The only essentially thing that's, this is changing is allowing an individual that buys those permits to then relinquish them.
And get compensated.
And get compensated. Whereas if this, this language wasn't there, that individual would have to still. Graze on property. So that I, I believe that this language is just putting that stipulation and if somebody wants to. I'm in this area. And I would have to read, like I said, I'm not a lawyer by any means, I don't know. But what I'm seeing is if an individual wants to buy this, they wanna sell this permit to somebody and they decide that that's the end of grazing. Then under that statute, they can do. Whereas usually that's. Not, an individual would have to keep up with the grazing that they bought it for conservation purposes.
And then I would say this is pretty boilerplate language in a lot of today's conservation. Landscapes, they're being passed by Congress, just in that it is voluntary, it's incentive based and. There are situations when. You know. For wildfire or invasive weeds or other challenges within the monument, you know, you may no longer want to graze. So it's out there, you know, definitely something to comment on, folks, that's worth. Talking about, but I'll keep moving on. Okay. It also talks about the release of WSAs, so right now you've got Pat's Cabin, you've got Dead Dog, you've got Sutton Mountain, that are all WSA status and. Without diving too deep into the weeds. Those wilderness study areas were sort of this. They were never meant to be a permanent designation tool for the BLM. They were meant to say these are wilderness quality lands. But in the nineteen ninety, so, okay, I'll give you a quick. The nineteen sixty-four Wilderness Act was like this. Big deal back in the day, but it didn't include the BLM. The BLM was not a part of the nineteen sixty-four Wilderness Act. So it wasn't until later, which is sort of the, you know. The, the guiding star for the BLM is called the Federal Lands Management and Policy Act. That was designated in nineteen, that was passed Congress in nineteen seventy-six. And it's the overarching framework for how the BLM manages all two hundred and forty-five million acres that they own. And a part of that said that the BLM needs to inventory and consider their wilderness quality landscapes. And provide a report to Congress by nineteen ninety. And as part of that report, so this is where like in the nineteen seven, late seventies and early eighties. The Oregon and Washington BLM and all the other BLM state offices did an inventory of the landscapes and looked at places primarily. Natural, provided opportunities for recreation, solitude and. The other components of wilderness, right? And they identified Sutton Mountain, Pat's Cabin, Dead Dog and other places. As wilderness quality lands, and then they separated this report into two buckets. Those recommended for wilderness and those not recommended for wilderness, and it was about half and half. These WSAs, I believe, I'll double check, were recommended. To be designated as wilderness back in the nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-one, when they went to the first President Bush. But no action was ever really taken. By Congress in the early nineties. So ever since that time, you know, thirty some years now almost, they've been sort of this like quasi wilderness management status. And that's one of the reasons why we have a lot of these conservation bills at play today. And that's one of the reasons why we have a lot of these conservation bills at play today. Because we're trying to resolve these decades-long conflict around, well, are they wilderness or are they not? Are we gonna release them? Are we gonna make them be wildernesss? And. One of the things we talk about a lot, cause Oregon has two point some million acres of wilderness study areas. This is a small chunk of about fifty-five thousand acres. Um. But we're trying to determine which ones to make wilderness or other, you know, this in this case, this isn't a wilderness bill, this is a monument, this is. A little different, but just trying to figure out what the permanent management is for these lands. And so ultimately, this bill would release these from being the temporary wilderness study area. Term. Sorry, that was long, confusing, but. Going to get through that, um. It also states in here that there is no effect on fish wildlife management, so all fish wildlife within the monument will be managed, continue to be managed by the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. Um, including things like hunting and fishing regulations, so some natural monuments, as you probably know, like the. Pan Hills don't allow for hunting, um. Or fishing, I believe, but definitely not hunting, uh, cause I know there's some good chuckers in those hills that I can't access. Um, water rights, there's no change or authority, tribal rights, no change or authority. Then we get into section four, which is the land exchanges.
Sorry, so you're saying there will be no hunting?
There will be hunting. So that's clarified in this bill, it was. In the last version of the bill, it was sort of assumed that hunting and fishing would be continued. But it wasn't sort of written in statute, and so one of the things that our group wanted to see was it was written in statute. That hunting and fishing in this monument will continue to be managed by the state fish model. And so the B L M will have no authority to shut down hunting or fishing, um, as long as it's maintained under the state fish model.
In what section are you at?
I'm on section four now. Okay, so section four is these land exchanges, and so there's three different landowners in this bill that was. Sort of looking at that map again, some of you may have, um. And if you zoom out a little bit and go to Legends, you can see these different colors. Um, I guess the biggest one there is the blue and sort of. Uh, what color you wanna call that reddish looking thing? Um, that's Twickenham Land Transfer.
Here.
Yes. Yeah, so that orange to the blue.
Goes to here.
Yeah, so the current orange is managed by the B L M, that would. Become Twickenham lands, and the blue is currently Twickenham land that would go to the B L M. And. That's a land swap, the other one is the. Uh, orange to green, and that's the quant, point, I'm not sure he said that. And yeah, so the orange is currently B L M that will go to Quant, and the green is currently B L M to go to Quant.
So it's basically landlocked.
Yep, and he, yeah, he just doesn't wanna be a, as far as I understand it, I have not talked to the Quants, um, this is sort of. This has all been worked out through Senator Berkeley's staff. And the Quants are okay, as far as I know, the landowners are all generally supportive of these transfers, cause if you look at those. B L M pieces in orange there, it makes no sense really, um. They have these landlocked public lands. And so they're trying to basically consolidate and make more public land available to the public and less public lands. That has to be managed by the private banks on their, on their lands.
More contiguous.
So it's more contiguous, there's also a tiny little transfer land from Faulkner's. And it's so small, you can't even really see it, and so just to give you an idea, the Faulkners is fifteen acres from the beds to ten acres. The Faulkners. Quants is two hundred and thirty-six to the B L M, two hundred and seventy-one to Quants. And Twickenham would be five hundred and seventy-four to the B L M and five hundred and sixty-six to Twickenham. So pretty even, then it looks. I don't personally, I mean, other than the same.
Twickenham Livestock LLC. And Family LLC.
Um, so that's what I understand, just section five, six, and seven, or five and six are very quick, they're about mineral withdrawal. Basically, the monument would. Uh, any non-active mineral releases or or mineral mining plans would. Would no longer be allowed once monument. So any lease that had already been in existence under the eighteen seventy-two mining law would be active and valid. But if somebody went to apply for a mining, uh, permit on Sutton Mountain after it becomes a monument, they would not have that ability. Section six is similar, it's around state land mineral interests, I all did though, it's very short, I don't really understand, I don't even think there is state. So I'm not sure. What, what that has to do with this, um. Section seven is sort of the bulk of what I believe we're here to talk about today, which is the conveyance piece, um, under the Recreation Public Purposes Act. And so. I'm gonna s- just briefly touch on it, and then I wanna circle back to the section seven piece, cause I think that's what, a lot of it's part of what we wanna talk about. Is what's possible with that.
I'm sorry, what section?
Section seven. And so this is the land conveyance to the city of Mitchell and the Wheeler and Wheeler County. Um, one thousand three hundred and twenty-seven acres would go from B L M lands and be conveyed to the city of Mitchell. And one hundred and fifty-nine acres would be conveyed to the county, so this land conveyance, under the Recreation Public Purposes Act. Um, we'll come right back to that, section eight is coordination of local government, means when the man of the plans for this monument are put in place. Under Federal Lands Policy Management Act, the city and the county would both have. Sort of outsized voices as, uh, coordinating agencies on any man plan development that take place on the monument. So it talks about that, section nine, it just means. The secretary, uh, or the sen- senator who passes this authorizes. Any appropriation of finances necessary to enact.
Question.
Sure.
So, um. So in section seven, to start with, um, conveying this to the city, we do not have jurisdiction. How does that play out?
So that's, well, so that's all I got, now we can just talk about the conveyance. So the city does not have jurisdiction, what sense?
And our city limits is one square mile. And under the public lands, you need to have jurisdiction.
Good question.
Under, under the public lands, I'm sorry, it's, uh. Right, yep, you have to have jurisdiction.
That means we need to, we'd have to take.
We'd have to annex.
Well, since. Since, so part of the bill is including. The resources necessary to enact the bill. It would be my assumption that, that. If this. If this requires the city to annex that piece of property, and the bill says. We want all of the funds available to enact this bill. It seems to me like they're saying. We'll also pay for that.
That's what, that's how I read it.
I don't know if that's the case, but I mean, it seems like that's.
Well, so this is important. Important to note with section eight is it authorizes the appropriations necessary. To enact this bill. Authorize is much different than appropriate. Authorized means that the money is out there in a bill. But then Congress has to actually take that through their. Help me out with the term here, stage on like their annual appropriations bill, I guess that's what it is, right? So through the Department of Interior's Appropriations Bill, they would have to. Appropriate that authorized money to fund anything instead. I would say that Senator Merkley is the chair or second senior interior appropriator, so. He's the most powerful senator to do this kind of stuff, and this is his bill, so. I think that gives everyone a great chance, but I just wanna throw that out there, that authorize is different than appropriate. Well, you can't do anything other than off. I don't believe, because if you, if you appropriate the money in the bill. The bill has to go through a whole different, and again, I'm not. Up and up on this stuff, I work here in Oregon, on B C, but. But if you appropriate money within a bill, it goes through a whole different, uh, this is. In the Senate. Energy and natural resources meeting firm. If there's money that's appropriated within the bill, it goes to the ways and means to move, or something like that, Senate Judiciary. A place that you don't really wanna be, cause there's fiscal, uh. Fiscal requirements attached to it. So the likelihood of passage is much more, much higher if it doesn't include. A fiscal impact to the government this time. That's kind of my vague understanding, Sage, I don't know if you.
Yeah, it's essentially, they would still have to. Approve. Of the money for this, but it's, it's appro- it's appropriated. Essentially, it's saying, if you put a price on this, it's gonna have to go through a completely different. Markup, it's gonna go to a different committee that Merkley, I don't know, sits on, you know, so. This, this is usually how bills are passed, is it's appropriated, and then they. They come through, now that's not saying that that's a hundred. But being the, no, it's, I I mean, you can't guarantee anything, I mean, who knows what. Congress is gonna look like next year with, during a war, you know, you can't say, oh, this. And that's why if you guaranteed the source of the money and said, this is, that's why it would have to go through so many different steps. In the appropriation process, but this is usually how. These bills, that gives more control to that committee of how process goes than if it were to get sent to. The judiciary committee, where they're gonna look at it completely different way. Than, yeah.
And I would say though, that to your point, Patty, there is a lot of room under this authorization of appropriations necessary in order to put things. Uh, in clear language under the bill. That says something along the lines of the city of Mitchell. Is authorized to have appropriated X amount of money to do whatever they want to do, right, so. You could add language in there that's best, that adds specificity, cause right now it just says anything required in this act. If you, if there are specific things such as the cost of annexation or something. You could write that into the bill.
You have to do this, there's, yeah, a survey.
Financial things within the bill.
That's like putting a, uh, unfunded mandate out, you know, you might as well. You know, if there isn't any financial impact. Consideration for the city, when you're talking about a city that's already struggling. Um, you're talk, gonna tax your EMS, which is already taxed. Um, we have a very large area that we cover with very few people. And so now we're gonna be covering even a a bigger area with, um. That we're obligated to now that we're annexed, and you know, you're talking about staffing and and all kinds of other things, so. To me, in the best interest of the city. Would be to have some sort of guarantee that there is some funding available, because we don't even have the staff to go find. The funding once this is conveyed.
Yes. Um. I don't know if you wanna pull up the R P P A. Information bulletin thing that I sent you, but we can maybe.
What is?
Um, the Recreation Public Purposes Info Bulletin related to Catherine's questions, um, I think I sent back. But there's a, uh. There might be an email from me yesterday.
Recre.
About Catherine's questions.
Yesterday.
I think you.
Look, this.
I'll try that one and scroll all the way to the end here.
So I wanna make sure everybody's got the bill. You could, if you want to send it to me again, I can.
Sir, Catherine, you wanna send, did I not send? You didn't get an R P P A thing or a question thing?
The wifi is Mitchell.
Mitchell.
Capital N.
I should, I apologize, I thought I, uh, something. Cause Catherine has some really good questions that I can, uh. Well, just in general, I think it'd be good to, to discuss this R P P A. Topic.
I remember someone that said possibly there between. That and email.
Yeah, I, well, I can just, I don't have any email, but I can, uh, here, let me just pull up this. You guys have email or internet, so I can just. The Recreation Public Purposes Act is an interesting. Um. Opportunity for county governments and city governments and even nonprofits and state agencies to purchase. Land from federal agencies to be used for. Recreation or things that benefit of. And, you know, offers things like, you guys could turn that parcel into a campground or fairground, or hospital, firefighting. Service station or, um. A lot of different things at very low cost, and so the the cost to acquire is. Way smaller than it would be if you were tied by twelve hundred acres, um. On the open market.
I don't even think the land.
I don't think so, I don't have that.
Yeah, right, I mean, really then. Because there's been a lot of chatter back and forth about, you know, this has been going on for ten years. Is this ever really gonna happen? And then people would say, well, why don't you spend your growth boundary and take the land, it's like, well, you don't have the money to do that. So it's kind of a.
As I understand it, we could expand our growth, but that that land still belongs.
Yeah.
We don't, I, so this, I I will, I did some research on this.
No, if you annex out that far. When we had a meeting before, I I had asked if we annex out that far, would B L M still be interested in keeping that land, and they said no.
And you were in the conveyance, we don't own the land. Well, under the contract with B L M, we have to abide by that contract.
Yes.
Which we don't know what the contract's going to read until it comes into it.
Well, we know what the contract is, because it's.
Well, no, no, the the conveyance portion, they could say you must keep your grass at three quarters of an inch. And if you don't, they give you like a warning. But that, in meetings before, that was kind of a red flag to the person, because. It's like, here you go, here's my invite, your house is happy. You know, whatever, whatever it is, and you'd have to abide by that, or they'd just take it like that.
You'll own nothing, you'd be happy.
No, there's, there's actually a lot of flexibility in this, um. I was. Okay, let's see.
In charge, never been able to sell property. The last time we had a meeting, it was like, they're saying fifty acres for howling, fifty acres for economic development, but. So we don't own it, then, I mean, but housing.
Well, I think under the, I think you can't.
You can't, you can't put housing on there.
No. But not necessarily.
Economic development. In this, for with this triangle.
Yep. But this is what the bill says now, under the public land.
The same one I got. Last year, because later than two years, and I have decent amount. This meeting of age.
Um, city of Mitchell, is that the best you know?
Yeah.
Sorry, I just got songs by a bunch of stuff that came into. I just sent some, yeah, and then I can, you can be able to pull up. Um, so I reached out to Frankel B L M and Senator Merkley Douglas to learn more about some of these. Questions from the city around like, what can you do with it? What is the Recreation Public Purposes Act good for, um? And the B L M responded to a lot of potential questions that would come up. So. Um, if you tap on that link there. This is a really good. This is a really good informational guide on the Recreation Public Purposes Act. And just the first. Paragraph there, it says the Act authorizes sailor lease of public lands for recreational public purposes to state and local governments. Examples of typical uses under the Act are historic monument sites, campgrounds, schools, firehouses, law enforcement facilities. In municipal facilities, hospitals, parks, and fairgrounds. So it seems pretty broad to me, and then if we keep going down a little further. Um, it talks about. You know, so there's no real limit to the amount of lands that can be purchased. It's just the amount necessary for the city's needs, essentially. And keep going down from there. Come down. Um, the cost of lands, this is kind of interesting. So there's three different. Sort of buckets that you would pay for acquiring this land. The first is basically free. Uh, so a permanent conveyance of land for recreation or historical monument purposes are made without a charge. The lands. Uh, so. Other public uses. It says, um, you can also buy them under special pricing, which is ten dollars an acre with a minimum price transfer fifty dollars. So let's say that you. Purchased all thirteen hundred acres. For ten dollars an acre, you're looking at thirteen thousand dollars, which is pretty crazy in my mind. And that would allow you to basically do your public health-related facilities, your fire and law enforcement structures, courthouses. Et cetera, et cetera. Um, you can also. Purchase the price of the land if it doesn't qualify for special pricing. Of one half of fair market value. I have no idea how much that would be. If you restrict members of a particular or limited group, it goes up to ninety percent of fair market value. I don't, I don't really understand what those special uses would be.
Um, I think, though, that this was it when their surplus property from the state, this is that what the state would charge you, not if we owned it and then sold it, correct?
When you, you wouldn't be able to sell. You would.
Right.
Outright. And you would, it would be deeded to the city, as long as you followed the rules in the Recreation Public Purposes Act, and you use that. Land. For the benefits that you apply to it.
Right, so why are we paying for land that we was just conveyed to us?
Well, you only pay for it if it is not, uh, if it's. So public purposes in my mind would be like a camper, right? Well, you're, I think what you're asking is, if the bill goes through, you know, and it's conveyed, why would you pay?
Right.
No, I, I think what you're saying is. There it is, they can convey it to you. You can get special pricing, or you can get regular pricing, and. It all depends on what you're using, that what you guys want to use. Right, and so that's a big deal for you guys, you gotta figure out before this bill really gets too much further. What do you want it?
I'm not absolutely, you know, you guys obviously professional, so, but. For me to sit here and. Take in that. You owe it, it's yours, it's due to you, but you can only do what. We let you do it, and you can't sell it, and you can't do this, but it's yours.
I understand, um, I would also say that there is, you could outright purchase this land. And it would be deeded with no restrictions. But you're going to have to pay fair market value. From the BLM, whatever they, I think it appraisers go in and. You can do that. Um, it is a much more costly. Process, whereas I, from what I understood from Senator Berkeley's office, you guys are looking at things that will benefit the community. You'll be looking at things that are like campgrounds or. You know, waste facilities or water facilities, which are all allowed under the Recreation Public Purposes Act for a much reduced cost. And so. I think Senator Berkeley is looking at this from, from your guys' standpoint and saying. It will be a lot more affordable. If you have, you will have some restrictions on your deed. But the intent for what you guys wanna do is in line with the restrictions anyhow. So it shouldn't. Matter, but you could also purchase the land. That is totally an option, and you could write this into the bill where. The city is to purchase X amount of public lands. To be deeded and appraised after the act is. I, I don't know the specifics behind that. Again, we'll have to. Sort of follow up questions from Senator Berkeley and others, but there is the option to do outright purchase. It's just likely going to be. Uh, much more costly than thirteen thousand dollar.
Right, it's, it's just hard to. Like Kevin's saying, you know, we're one square mile, we don't really have any place to build.
Yeah.
Out there, it's flat and pretty easy to. Build. We do need to. We do need to.
And if you go back to my email. There's some other questions that I asked the BLM.
May I weigh in on this? So, for example, I just actually got done, um, for a couple of year deal through the surplus. Of the state. It was supposedly attached to my, my property that I purchased and come to find out it was not. So that process, I spent forty thousand dollars to buy seventeen hundred dollar piece of property. This is what this sounds like to me, that we're gonna spend way more in. Attorney's fees and surveys and things like that to buy a really cheap piece of land. That it sounded like it was being conveyed and in return. The support that we were giving for the triangle. Was sort of the buy-in for. Like our portion. And, and now it seems like now, not only, but if you wanna use it in something more than a campground. Now you have to pay for it, but then you also better figure out what you wanna do with it, but we don't really know how we can use it. So there's, there's a lot of like.
I say that that's largely why the Senator would like bringing folks like Congress events and others to support the bill. Because if you have advocates at the Senate and Congress and you understand the intent of what the bill was. These are our publicly elected, right? So if they pass a bill for us. It says you're gonna get this land convinced to do X, Y, or Z. They're gonna hold themselves to that. And so I think. That is the intent of the bill, and I understand those concerns, but I do believe that your senator and if Congress and Bents. Wants to engage on the bill. You would feel, I would feel much more comfortable putting something through like this. Knowing that that is very clearly the intent, so. You know, I, I do understand those con- conflicts. I don't have all the answers to. I've done any sort of conveyances, so. I literally found this last week, looking up Recreation Public Purposes Act. But I, it has been done several times. The city of Las Vegas is well known for a lot of these, because they, they're expanding like crazy, and BLM is. Largely what's left to expand into, and so they've done. You know, there's examples in here of the city of Las Vegas doing parks and public use facilities and. All of these were done at basically no cost. Um, the other thing that's important to remember when you're looking at. When you're looking at Recreation Public Purposes Act and the city of Mitchell that largely doesn't have a lot of resources to do the housing development needs. I mean, you can pull in Governor Kotek on these types of issues. I think she would. This is something I think you guys would get traction on, is the whole housing. Piece that she really wants to see happen, right? What does she put a hundred and thirty-six million or something towards housing? And if, if you had. A piece of land that was owned by the city with the purpose for affordable housing. You would probably get a lot of grant money and match money and. Resources to facilitate, assist, I'm just, again, throwing out ideas, but I feel like. My personal belief is it's, it's in the best interest of the city. To go through the Recreation Public Purposes Act and have sort of a. I don't know what you wanna call it, like a, a lean position on your deed. If your intent is to improve the city and improve housing and use it for public good. Because you will get additional grant money down the road and you'll get this parcel at a, at a much reduced cost. But I don't.
Yeah.
I kinda like looking at. You know. A deed that will have restrictions, just like buying a piece of property that's, you know, within the residential area, you have restricted, you bought the property. But it had restrictions because it's residential, you know?
Yeah, that's true. I mean, I live in a wildlife combining zone. I, I had all these restrictions on the bill that I'm doing. I was able to work through them. But it came with some certain restrictions through the county zoning process. Um, I can't build two houses on my land. I only go one, you know, and there's. Oftentimes, there are things that come with limitations, but. If the intent of the city is to do something for the city's economic development that benefits the community. I think you'll be a lot cheaper to go through the Recreation Public Purposes Act and. Receive. Match money for those. Propose. So, one of the things that, that I've kicked around, and even I've talked about this, and I've talked to school about it. Eventually, the school will need an upgrade. And if the school was able to move out to that property. Then that would free up where the gymnasium is and where the school is for a higher density housing, and they're getting mental. And that money would go directly to. You know, if the city of Mitchell sold those lots to a developer, or the temple those lots to developers, and the city of Mitchell's in a much better financial position. Plus, you're removing the school. Out of, you know, having to go up. High street, you know, most of the street, high street every, you know, twice a day. And it seems like if, if. If the city is in a position of. Being able to use that land for a school, then that does automatically open up some, obviously, some doors. For the state to step in potentially and say. We wanna help you fund your school. And also. City of Mitchell will help you tear down those buildings and get affordable housing. But if we. We don't have that access. That we may be. I mean, I understand it comes with restrictions. I get that, and I don't like it either. But it does open up some doors for potential. That. Right now, we have no way. So I don't know, that's just my. And, and then. The other obvious advantage is. If this goes through. We get that. Dang piece of property out of limbo. Out of the WSA limbo. Turn it into something that we can use. With less restrictions. The only cool thing about the Recreation Public Purposes Act is you can, and I, it says in here, you can use a. Uh, concessionaire, right? So you could look at. That as a campground and, and pay the concessionaire to manage it for the city, uh, and those fees are allowed. You can charge for a campground, you can charge for services to go to a fairground. And attend a rodeo. It just has to be in line with other similar services.
So. We can get like playgrounds of America. To come in, put the bill to develop a campground. And they turn.
I think you might be able to.
And then turn pay us.
Right.
Whatever percentage of leases. Because that's the only way that. Right now, as we said, that's the only way the city can do anything to. Like there's probably.
Maybe ask this way, with, with ODOT, let's say, let's say that land was conveyed before ODOT was there, and then ODOT wanted to put it out there. ODOT would end up paying a lease city. To have that, was not conveyed in, or that's. I don't think that's a good thing. I'm gonna write that one down. That's a good example. Let's say. ODOT. You wanna release that land.
Well, they already have.
And if you go to my email, I think I tried to respond, I asked about this question at least. And the BLM responded.
Great.
As long as the lease. The person leasing land is using it for recreation.
So, so we got leased that land, or they?
I think.
The state owns the land.
Yeah, the state owns.
Yeah, yeah.
That was prior to.
Prior to what?
Prior to the WCA?
In the conveyance map, it doesn't.
Right. Yeah, it doesn't. Right, it's a, yeah, it's not, it's out of. Wait, Catherine.
So I think in one of the. Questions I said, I think response was that. It cannot be sold or leased to private citizens of party for any reason, but it can be. Can be leased to government-based entity. Yeah.
And I, I did specifically ask that question to the BLM, it's somewhere in my email.
Uh, yeah. What?
Uh, okay. Citizen parties for entry.
Right.
And if she, the BLM person said, correct, this is managed under the Recreation Public Purposes Act. And then I can't see the. Does allow the landowner to charge reasonable fees for services provided. Consistent with other similar services, the city can hire a concessionaire. I guess. The question of lease is still to be determined. That doesn't sound like that good, but. Unless it's truly not.
Well, and the whole, um, sorry, the mobile home thing, I mean, that's gonna be dependent on the floodplain and there's other. Things there with the.
And so water treatment plants are allowed, uh. The property cannot be taken by anybody unless it is. Unless you're not. In accordance with the. Terms in the bill, you can put electricity, subject systems, water treatments out there. And you can put mobile homes out there as long as it's not supportive of season housing, I don't know, I don't know. I don't really know the legal behind that. I mean, it says yes.
So you can put modular homes, but not stick though.
I don't know. You should start a tiny one. I mean, there's a lot to be answered here. I think we should probably go to the BLM, and I mean, there's a lot of, this is just sort of initial brainstorm, right? In this.
We've invited BLM to come do a couple of these and.
They haven't come yet.
It was because there was a lot of the outline ranchers, farmers. And who was it? Merkley's? He didn't, BJ. He uh, he didn't hurt too well, and probably after, I don't know if it's part of. When he went to here, the team. Couple of the farmers really went bad. You know, the outline people have a lot more. Questions like the river, you know, they wanna expand their. No, no, they wanna. They wanna make it wide, like restricting access to the river.
Oh, water gaps, closing off the water gap.
Making them wider and they're, I don't know if this is all tied in with the conveyance act. With it, or if that's a separate act, they were.
Well, I, I did. The floodplain is not part of, would not be part of the city land. Look at that, it's like, there's a little card out in the map that I sent you guys. But everything outside the floodplain would become city lands.
Wait, 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 what? That's the Owens Ranch.
Very small, I mean, tight, look at that map that I sent you.
Uh, okay, wait, is it this one?
And there's a, there's a. What do you call that, like a little cart out?
So you do not get the Owens Ranch.
Do you see the purple stuff? But you get everything around, I mean, it's just the floodplain, it doesn't look very big. I can't tell from the map what it looks like, but to me. You can see the brown there, there's a little tiny gap. Well, you, if you get that little piece there, you see Owens Ranch, you do get. The brown is.
Is that correct?
That's probably correct, yeah. I mean, I can't really, but this, this is not a great map, but. There is a piece of brown on the.
Very, very small on the red.
Western side of the highway or river there that would be. North of the highway and southwest of the river that would be conveyed and seen. But the purple, as I understand it, is not conveyed.
Cause it's the floodplain. Which is this.
Which is the red.
Right, so.
So everything with the red probably goes, that's my understanding.
This is. Right there.
In our community, the end of this.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, as I understand it, you do get the Owens Ranch, you just don't get that red.
Except for if that's the case, then the, if you look at the access.
I mean, I'm sure that road was. I, I.
It's very traveled on the road.
Right.
I mean, I think we might be getting a little too in the weeds. I imagine if it's a designated road, it's gonna stay a road, and you guys would have access to that road. But I'm not the one who developed it, so. We can ask questions. I mean, you want me to ask if that road would be.
Well, the roads are there, but it's right there where it elbows out. They didn't purchase right on the roadway, and if we, after the conveyance, we can't improve it.
Well, I'm sure.
The Owens Ranch, it shows a little ODOT saving land. Must have been.
On, on this one?
I mean, it, and this has been a while since I've talked to the BLM about this. My understanding was just that. Uh, they've done a lot of restoration work in the floodplain, and they just wanted to maintain that piece. The literal floodplain. I've planned a lot of cotton boys that did not go there. Every time I drive by, I'm like, did it make it? No. Um, some of them did, but especially the Owens Ranch part, it didn't quite. Hey, there's a lot of tubes there.
Well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna keep hogging the conversation, but I also don't want. The Owens Ranch to be underplayed because that is like probably the key feature of all of this, the historical portion.
Satellite detail. Mac. Definitely. So it's all fine and.
Because once, once you go hit that road there, then it starts getting into the hills and that. There really is, that is the flatland. So there really isn't much campground or anything once you get outside of. This area, if I'm correct, right? Anybody?
Or it, it, the property is self-workable. You have.
Up over, right, right.
The, the red right.
Yeah, and you're in, been like, um. One of the key things.
Yeah, and I, you understand, you guys would maintain, you would have access and ownership of the Owens Ranch.
Right, well.
Or. But I will ask. I'll see if we can get a detailed map of a floodplain exemption. Or only.
And then I have one more question, the airport, because right now BLM does not claim to own the airport, the airstrip. They have no records of it and, um, it shows in. That the airport is in this brown section.
Yeah.
Um. So if there could be some. Um, comment on the airstrip, yes, that would be great.
Well, there is another eleven or thirteen acres up there, we'll continue.
Yeah.
So the city owns that land already?
Yeah.
Well, there's another, there's another.
The one oh seven?
Yeah.
Right.
That's the dump.
And you guys own that already?
We own the dump.
Really don't think that's, I don't think you're going to have to annex that piece to have. I mean, I'll, I'll clarify, but it just, to me, it seems like it's pretty clear in the language of the bill, this land would be conveyed to the city. Whether or not it's currently in your jurisdiction, it's. But I will clarify. So airport clarification of ownership?
Well, just what, you know, what.
Make sure that the airport is conveyed to the city as well.
And that's already, uh.
It, no.
Or no, it's county and.
It, there is, BLM doesn't have a record of the airstrip, so nobody really knows who owns it, so whoever owns it and however it's supposed to be maintained. If we're allowed to do that with this property or. Um, that's our emergency. An emergency airstrip too, correct?
Yeah.
Lots of, you know. Teleporters coming.
Yeah.
I thought, maybe wrong, the original landowner developed that. On, when we. I think it was written on, developed that air, that airstrip. For personally use and then. It just started.
Right, but it, yeah. People climbing in there.
Yeah.
We need to be responsible.
Who's responsible to maintain it?
Yep, yep.
They have one, they're looking at them now, but I, I think way back in the day.
Um.
Not always.
So would you guys want, I mean, you want to like next step of this is to have the new DJ come out and talk with you guys? The Senator Stafford? That, would that be a good, helpful meeting?
Helpful?
I, I think more. Involved, we can be with the people that are. Involved. Um. I think eventually we need to have a town hall where. Outside of our city too, or. Everything back. It's last time, I think, you know, you want that.
When was last?
Three, oh, BJ, yeah. Oh, BJ just resigned and directed.
Last town hall, though.
He, well, last town hall. Yeah. Maybe it's early last year and.
And it wasn't a good town hall or happening before that.
Before that, cause I wasn't on it.
Yeah. He did, he, he. I said, they hammered him pretty good. Um, and. If we'd have BLM or represent BLM.
Maybe we have Gavin and the BLM rep. So.
Because they, last time, that's what they were at, talking to BLM and answering their own questions and. Like, well, they were invited.
I, I found that really helpful in a case I was just working on. There's some people in the prime bill office that have. Really good expertise, obviously. Well, me and my, we have, we're jack of all trades and a lot of things, so I think it would be really beneficial to have a land use expert out here to answer some of the questions.
There's a guy named Nick Green. Have you guys been in contact with him? Cause Nick Green, I've been, Senator Merkley's staff said he's sort of a land use expert from City John Day. And maybe he could be another one.
Yeah, he was the city planner for the city. But he had started. This ring, he started himself.
I think that's on the city's behalf, you need to have somebody who. Um, is familiar with land use law. You know, just to look out for the city's perspective.
Or if there was. I don't know whether it's Nick Green or, it's kind of like when you go looking for a grant. Right? Somebody who knows all the ins and outs, what we really need on a lot of grants. Cause it's only so much. So a guy like Nick Green or somebody else. That could be our advocate, maybe.
Mm-hmm. What, uh, what about like? Just again, thinking about all the. The conveyances that have been done and the Recreation Purposes Act, like Senator Merkley's staff put together some sort of a case study. On how this worked in Las Vegas or something, or there are case studies out there.
Not even comparable, though. I mean, you would have to.
Looks, it's like you guys want a school, right? So if there was an example of cities who purchased BLM lands and built schools and like the breakdown cost and just. I think the more examples you guys can have, the better, just to see how.
Or a campground or.
Or campground. All we bought, right? Like examples of things, I, I, things you guys would like to see, which to me seems like it's schools, campgrounds, water, water treatment facilities.
And what else?
Center, interpreting. So an interpreting center is allowed along with tourism. That's the thing I read about in there is tourism centers to be. Under our PPA, so for like the Painted Hills, you know. I want you to call Front Door and Painted Hills, you can have a. City-run tourism facility. Info center. Under this. Um. I don't know if. Congressman Pence had given you guys any, given you any thoughts on the bill beforehand, or if you had any sort of input on what? Cause I, last I talked with Brianna and Nick and others, it's kind of like. You were still considering the bill and looking at ways to, you got, there were some concerns around AUMs, um. And the conveyed lands. And that small loss of AUMs. On what was conveyed.
I think, I think the biggest thing for me that, uh, was coming in here is I, we knew that there had been some. Changes in the counselor positions. This had. Been reactivated. To look at the bill and see where everybody kind of stood on that before. I think it's more where the support in the community is at, where the counselors find themselves, uh. And, and supporting something like that, but that's always something that. And I know that's a political plot, thing to say, but there's something that I definitely would bring back to him before I, I said that he would. Be in favor or not in favor or something, but. Um, I, for my purposes coming here and it's kind of difficult too, because. Brianna just left, so I didn't really get to have that interaction with her before coming to this meeting. And we're having another person come on out of our office. So Brianna was our natural resources liaison pretty much, um. In our office and she didn't have gone to three hundred pastures, because that's what happens when. It, it changes in the structure in DC, um, but that's kind of, uh. I don't want to speak, that's kind of where. Me coming into this meeting was, and obviously you guys haven't seen me, so I'm, I'm new to and learning kind of where everybody sits and. Uh. Kind of seems like there's a lot of questions that need to be answered before that's.
That, yeah, it seems totally accurate. So would you guys summarize all this to Congressman Benson's office and say you're interested in the bill? But you really need to sort out this conveyance stuff. And a lot more.
Well, yeah, we need to know. Hmm, what we can do with it and what costs. I mean.
The cost break.
Speaking, I'm being up, but from my standpoint. I understand we're limited if we just acquire it and convey it for that in the cost. After, say we acquired it, conveyed it, no costs, is there any way of. Reworking the contracts when you're done with. Reworking the, the language that we could allow for. Future housing, things like that, or. Once we sign that set in stone for. Yours. I mean, I, I think. Our community, you may, you know, more willing to. We can get the land and then maybe ten years down the road and rework the contract saying, okay. You guys done great. You can now, you know, we'll change the view for any of the particular for permanent company. I mean, modulars, there's some of the modular homes. I mean, there's nothing against modular homes, but. Um. I know all of our concern is financial, where are we going to get? If, you know, I had, my thought was a pretty least portion of land to somebody to. What? We want to do, but we, we can't do it and then to get a. You know, yearly lease from. Not all, it just, you know, a, a portion where we have something coming to where we can do. With, for the city's investment.
Have a K away, come in and build it up and then we get some of the proteins.
And we are, we're, our hands are clean, you know. And then with that money, we can put into. Other, other infrastructure down there, maybe a fire hall.
Yes, that all makes good sense. I want to make sure to leave time for you guys to talk with Sage about other city issues too, so I'm just gonna. Summarize some of the questions that I'll bring back to Senator Merkley and others, but. Uh. The jurisdiction question about would you have to spend money to annex the lands, um. Uh, the lease question about like, what the example of ODOT going to lease the land that they were used to get money back. Roadway access to Owens Ranch, uh. Get a detailed map showing satellite degree of the exemption on the floodplain for Owens Ranch. Airport clarification question. Have Senator White and Senator Merkley staff, um, along with the BLM rep and or possibly Nick Green come out sort of as a follow-up to this. And someone familiar with land use law. And then get a cost breakdown. Really what boils down to is what can we do with it and what. That seemed. Like a sum? Yeah. Very cool. No, yeah, appreciate the conversation, guys, um.
Well, then. How, like timeframe wise, if the committee stands true, we get the land. How soon do we have to start? You know, I mean.
You want to see a contract. You want to see like.
I, I would like to. Contract before. Right, right. It's our land, we have to ensure.
So the question is, could it be? That the conveyance. Is allowed by the act. But the conveyance, we, maybe it's such, in such a way that. The city could say, we're going to time. The conveyance.
Right.
Like we, we have access to that conveyance?
You guys aren't telling us how.
So we're not.
Yeah. That part I can answer and that, yes, you can do that. So this land will be, it is to be conveyed in this. In the bill. But it's simply to be conveyed. So it's sort of at the mercy of the city to then. Come forward under the Recreation Public Purposes Act with a plan. And you put that plan together to the BLM and the plan that you guys develop. Is what dictates. The cost of the land and all that. So, I mean theoretically, you can come up with a plan with Senator Merkley, Congressman Pence and others. Before the bill is enacted, talk to the BLM, make sure you know what your cost breakdown is. But the timeline piece does not start ticking until you put forward the plan. Of attack.
So we're not paying liability assurance on that land until.
That's right.
Until the plan is.
That's interesting.
But the conveyance of land goes through, we need to get surveys, we know where our land is.
To, to come up with an engineering plan to then present to BLM.
You know, you say it's a, the logging road, but how do you know? But the logging road is our boundary to here, to here and to here to survey thirteen hundred acres, that's going to be priced. Again, we.
I can tell you for a fact, my small eleven acres. And this is a pricey piece.
We had eighteen hundred square feet of the pricing, um. And therefore.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's covered under the act. These are all good. So I wrote down survey costs and foods.
We have. We, you know, you, that would be. The, I think, that's always been said as new.
Couple in here that said that. Part of the, uh. Authorization where the survey costs and that would be shared, so. Yeah.
Oh, that's sad.
Yeah. We did say that, with semi-cost and all, some of the cost would be shared.
Sure.
Murphy's office, Francis's office.
Well, he comes back outside his paycheck. I won't be.
It says that the Secretary of Interior for the private parties. The, the Secretary of the Interior will come up with the survey, but then we're supposed to get our own survey and I don't understand.
That's true, all the thing, you have. The city has something about an advocate, right? Somebody who knows land use and where to get money. That advocate might.
It's a unicorn. It's a unicorn.
He's done some pretty amazing things.
That's what I'm thinking. I mean, Nick Green, uh. In my opinion, this could be a great thing for the city, cause you get land that has limitations, but it's meant for public purposes and for. Building out the city for the public good. So. If you keep it in that framework. All the grants I've ever done, I mean, it's like. We're doing good things. We're limited on what we can do, so help us. And so I, I think it's. My personal opinion is that's the way to go. It's a lot cheaper and, and to me, it tells a better story. This city trying to remain robust and. Grow over time and have economic stability and do the kind of things that are limited because you're in a canyon with a river that is. Notoriously known to flood.
Right, but we are a. Very. Tourist place area.
Which again, I think also plays in favor of the fact that like, there's a lot of opportunity with that land. To get dollars from the tourism.
Not only is it a paint note, but.
Yeah, I mean, a campground and school and a tourism facility and, I'm thirteen hundred acres, you do all that.
And removing, you're giving all the restrictions of the WSA. I mean. What do you mean?
Yeah. So that's, that's all I got. You guys can pick Sage's brain.
Or not.
He wants the heat off of him.
I really do. Fucking at me, yeah. Take the hot seat, Sage. When you guys got.
Tell us what's coming down the pipe. Legislation might apply to us or.
Applied to the city of Mitchell?
Yep. Or our general area. Yeah, we're, we're impacted by, you know, the rancher and farmers, is there something coming down the line that? Possibly will not.
I would, I would point you guys in that, that's something that, uh, our office has been working on is we do pretty extensive, uh. A media newsletter, everything that's kind of going on. So something that I will tell you guys right now, I don't want to sit here and act like I'm a policy expert and, I, so. Uh, that's the first thing I'll say that, um, and we have people that will convey that to you. Um, so I don't want to say this is how this is, uh, this law is getting passed and this is what's going to happen here. Uh, by no means am I that individual, so I don't want to act like I am, cause I'm not. Um. But what I will say is that I want to. What I, after this, I want to get everybody's email because what we do do. Is we do an extensive, okay, this is the committee hearing that he just sat on, here's what's going on, I'll timestamp it for you guys. Everything, so that media is getting like directly pointed at you. So today they just held a water meeting. Um, so he's on the. Uh, our congressman's on the subcommittee, he's the chair of, oh, oceans, it's fisheries, wildlife. It's not oceans anymore. I have to get the new one.
Uh, it's not wow and waters, oceans and wildlife?
It's water. It's water, fisheries. And wildlife, it's not.
No, we're a longer ocean.
I don't, it's still oceans. Uh, yeah, I don't. I don't know what happened with that, but, um. That is a way that I can communicate and then so if you guys are having questions about legislative stuff. And I can keep you more informed that way. That's something that our office has been trying to do a better job of, so that you guys are getting updates at that day. Of, okay, this is what the congressman's having a hearing on, here's the people that he talked to, so you're hearing it more from. His point of view, instead of me having to go and ask a question. And if you guys do have any kind of questions like. Hey, what's happening here? Where is? Hey, what's happening here? Where is? Cause natural resources is very broad. I'm not going to act like it's not. So some of the questions that you guys have like land use. Different stuff, I'm, I'm by no means wanting to even try to, like you said, a unicorn, express. That would just be ignorant of me to do. So that's where I will say, um, but. Some of the stuff that he is focusing on, I know that he just did an A R S, A F R C podcast, podcasts and different stuff. So those are kind of. Items that I can give to you guys where you guys are getting that firsthand knowledge of exactly what he's thinking, exactly what he's trying to convey to you guys. Um, but I think some of the biggest stuff that he's focused on right now is water storage. Um, the Endangered Species Act, uh. A lot of, a lot of interesting stuff that I. You guys should listen to. I know you just talked about wolves. So they just had a committee. Uh, hearing last week on grizzly bears and wolves, which was fascinating to actually hear about kind of where wolves. Are going and. But I think mostly what, what, what I try to do here is not so much come to you guys and tell you what's going on in D C. But try to listen to what is happening here on the ground and convey that to D C to be like. Hey, this is an issue that's happening in Mitchell. This is an issue that's happening around our city or something that we're seeing like, can you? Like try to fix this. Can you get this done? And that's why I would call. My chief of staff or our natural resource individual that's coming in or the congressman himself when he comes into the, the office and be like, hey. The city of Mitchell, Catherine brought this excellent point up. This is what's going on. It, in. Here are two other people that brought this up. This is an issue that needs to go in D C and we need to have a legislative hearing. So that's more of like me conveying. Um, what's the issues on the ground, less of me conveying what's happening in. B C to you guys. And I can certainly be that person. And that's why I want to, I would hook you up to those mechanisms of. Getting updated information immediately. And that's where you could ask me the questions of. Oh, hey, in this subcommittee hearing, he was talking about this. This really relates to the city of Mitchell. How can the, and then that's, so I'm more of a facilitator of that. And if. And that's really my role is because of our congressional district being the fifth. Well, they say there's fifth, seventh, fourth, but one of the biggest congressional districts in the United States. Um, I mean, we're bigger than the state of Washington. Is conveying those issues and making sure that while he's in D C and he can't be out here. That I can be here conveying what's going on on the ground so that in D C. And that could happen, it happens all the time. Or an individual has that problem, we never even knew. It was occurring until somebody brought it up. And I'm sure I, Michael can say this. It happens with different groups where somebody will call in and be like, have you guys heard about this? And you'll be like. No, what, what's going on? And. That is essentially, I mean, you guys are public servants. That's essentially. That's moving that around. So that's, that's what I do. So I don't want to say like, this is everything that's going on because. Honestly, it might not pertain to you. So if it does, then I, and we don't want to waste your time. So if there's something that. That's going on that. You guys need an answer to, you're seeing something. And. If constituents are coming with to you guys where they're like, hey, there's this federal issue out on their land. Where there's, we're having a, we can't get our social security. We, that's where you call me too. And I hook you up to the right people where, or a veteran's issue or something where it's like, hey, this veterans. Something happened here, like you can't get immigration issue, like. Somebody got married overseas and you can't, that's where I can, you can convey that to me. And then we find the right facility. We have tons of people that work on many cases. So that's essentially my job is to make sure that I'm here. And open to listening and finding out what's going on and everything in Eastern Oregon so that that policy translates.
Yeah. So I'd say whatever that few things are, just like that through Sage, because it'll, it's a good chance to. Yeah, it's a great opportunity to sort of air what's going on in Mitchell up through the next.
I always have something to say, so unless somebody else has something.
And I will give you guys all my contact information in my direct cell after this so that you guys. Can at any time call me or if something pops up, email me. And that's my job is, oh, twenty four seven, not all the time. I have a wife, but most of the time. Is to get those answers for you guys. And if I'm not, then that's where, where you can have a very big issue is what is going on. So.
Kind of putting you on the spot, but. Obviously you're here to hear the community's sentiment on this particular issue, report back. Where do you gauge it?
I would gauge it right where you guys are sitting. I think that there needs to be more of an information sharing. Construction, uh, conversation before things move forward. I think. That's exactly what needs to happen. I know. And I, I think that would be very, not. Ignorant or anything, but just to go full fledged on anything. You guys are planners. That's why you're in a position is to take care of your constituents. So I think. Bringing in people with some expertise and not saying that we're not the smartest guys, but. Yeah, they, they can come in and answer specific poignant questions that aren't going to just go down. And have another question and a question to have actually people that could give you the straightforward answer of like, yes. No, this can't happen. Yes, this can happen. And then you have that. So it's not. In the gray. I think that that's exactly what needs to happen.
We want to know what we're exactly getting into. President Dan, you know, just, uh. The wording, we, me personally, I want to know what the city's. Going to get themselves into. Again, this thing's been discussed for like ten, twelve, fifteen years. And it's never, you know, I've, I've been mayor, it's my second term, but as I come to a board and it's like, it's going to create a nerve base. It's all. Always excited. Yeah, this is seven years. Oh, well, you know, it made committee. Last thing we heard, that's the after, it's set to go.
But that is where I would say that if we can get all that information and we can make changes to the bill. And if you can get somebody like Congressman Benz. To support it because of the constituents you guys are and the community of large, like if it benefits the community and the environment. And you can get a bipartisan bill that is really rare in this world. The chances of it going past committee after committee is way high. And so I'm not saying we're there yet at all. I'm just saying I think we're on a good path in terms of. Trying to find out how to do that because oftentimes this world is just not bipartisan.
The longer this goes on, the less traction our community is in. Again, it's like. Here we are, we did this eight years ago and.
Yeah, sure.
And you know, it's, it's, you know, our council is changing. I mean, there, Eddie was came back in Oakland, she was in the land, I do a few part of that. So it's like, it's kind of hard to, you know, just drum this up. So. I, I think it's a benefit to our. I know that our, our concern is it's a benefit of how we. Then we're, we're starting one to take care of what we are here. By long thirteen year date, but.
He's off the hot seat. Um, so in the last few years, we've had a lot of the outlying areas who shop here. Kids go to school here. You know, they're a part of the community. They're not, they don't exactly live in the city. Um, there's been a turnover of working ranches into, um, I get what I call rec ranches. And that had a big impact in families, moving kids, moving. And when you don't, I don't, do you know how many kids are right now, Pat? Thirty eight kids.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, I think.
Sage, you know about the, the dorm?
We, in order to keep funding the school some years ago. Um, they brought in a dorm, so foreign exchange kids, and then it became more of, um, local. Kids that needed a change of pays, Portland, whatever. Um, so. Different kids would come experience a. Quiet down, sort of just focus on learning, but then also be a part of the sports and. Um, just small town life, I guess, um, which was good for us because we got to meet. You know, the, the children from other places and, um, I think since COVID, we probably haven't seen. Quite so many of them, but they would do a lot of, uh, volunteering and, um, the exchange students or even just the kids.
How many people is that? How many people can't hold?
It'll hold like twenty something, but I think our cap is at, I want to say it's.
And how many do you have in there right now?
There's a right now. Next year, this kind of will reopen up to merit students whether. From the area that they live so far out.
Kind of like Craig does.
I mean, is there anywhere else besides Cream that has something like this?
So what, so what's your?
So my, the point was is that the turnover of, of families turning in. So for example. One of the working ranches was sold to, um, a very. High profile person who comes out here just, you know, maybe once or twice a year for the elk hunting and that. And so now it means families are not staying here, shopping here, kids are going to school and it, it's happened quite a bit. And so I, it kind of feels like that way of life and what. What is not tourism is leaving. And so if we are gonna succumb to just the kids within the district. Oh, we're gonna cease to exist in a very short amount of time. I don't know what the number is or if that's even been discussed. At some point, I mean, there isn't enough children. They'll have to get lost somewhere else.
So you need to bring in.
We need to bring in more families and children. And I, I get that the housing piece kind of works into that. This is a very long term. Plan, this Owens Ranch or, or what have you, um, were entered into a T G M program, which is a through O dot. A tr- uh, transportation growth management, which will change our code or help us change our code so that we can allow. Different types of building to allow maybe smaller residential and mixed use spaces, home businesses and, and that. Um, and then also the, uh, IRS came in and did a, um. Work from home program, a lot of the people in fossil, I think, really took to it. Um, so that allowed people with good broadband to be able to have a federal job. Benefits and things like that. I think for with this, it's not the training. So. I would like to see something like that boosted out here where people can have good paying jobs that they. Can stay here, keep their kids here. Doesn't have to be I R S, but you know, something. Where we are, we're building something, we're creating infrastructure to keep people here, we're getting jobs, we're, you know. It, it almost seems like we're just, we're, we're one crisis away from ceasing to exist, whether it be. Infrastructure, water infrastructure, our streets and. Our school.
So there, so I know a lot with building and stuff that is coordinated through the state. And. I would say that the way. And this is, I, I would say the way of life is changing. I mean, those ranches did get sold to different people. So it's like, okay, what? And now you guys are seeing that. Okay. So how is your broadband? Would be the question. How is the broadband in Mitchell?
I have two hundred and forty mags today at, at the city hall.
Wasn't really recently you guys got broadband? We've been doing all that work last year.
But I think that, um. Like I said, a jack of all trades, somebody, it sounds like to me. Like a lot of these initiatives that you guys have, you need somebody. And maybe just to have as, be like, hey, here are some ideas here, the state, the federal, because I don't. Sit on an aspect to tell you guys. This is how you're gonna fix much. But what I will say is that there are people. That do that and I don't, I know that, I mean, Nick Green does and there's controversies when it comes to him, whatever you want to say. Um, but there's other people as well, but that's also a really good avenue. Um, I know that. Is Wheeler a part of the frontier chamber now? I know Kai, Kai Lung, Kaylin and those individual, I think that there's a lot of initiatives going on. So the more active that you can be in being like, okay, hey, we're out here. We want to do something. What, you know, there's a tri-city. Uh, court hearing that just got held right from the county. So where it does the city of Mitchell, where. Like putting a list, like a plan together of like, okay, these are the initiatives that are going to come out of here and this is what we're going for. I think would be really beneficial in guiding you to those things. A federal initiative of Iraq. The one thing that I hear from your guys' town is tourism. I mean, you're sitting next to a, whether. You gotta use it for the good and the bad. And when I think of. This is my personal standpoint, Ryanville or Ben and the growing each of that community. How many individuals I heard the statistics, I don't know, and visit the city of Mitchell. How do you keep these people here longer?
See, that's funny because we go to bed and they'll be like, we're good, so Mitchell.
So, and that's, and that's, that's something. How many, so I, I will say this and this is. This is just from like a personal standpoint about being out in Eastern Oregon. Is that you will see a lot of towns and cities that do not cultivate what's going on very effective. Um, I can go pull up and. City pages or different pages and I don't know what's going on in the city of Mitchell or. Uh, Nissa or Vell or anything. And that is where it's so easy to do to just even start like a Facebook something or. Something where you're allowing like information is free to give away and people want that. So I would say that's. The onerous is on the city of Mitchell to be the ones that say, hey, here it is. Come like, come check it out, you know, um, because I've been on so many. I mean, I'm, this is my job. I go out and try to find things that people are doing, not just this, but like events and. Uh, chamber events in different places. I think the biggest thing is people might go look for something and never be able. To find out what's going on and having an individual that just kind of. If that, if I search city of Mitchell right now and what's happening in the next two months, what's going to pull up?
Nothing. We don't have a website.
Can you, I think the big thing here is like, we've got to figure out how to get more funding to the city to do these things. And then also like, I'm looking at. Just like simple ideas to me, like. Could the governor completely pass a bill that there's thousands of bills that are already listed every year, right? Like, could this state of Oregon? Somehow incentivize a tax structure that reduces the tax cost if you work from home in the city of less than five thousand. I don't know if that's not, like, I don't know where that even lies, but like, we got to figure out, we got to get people to these more rural communities and there's. So I started working from home before COVID, this child here, CP, but. It has just, it gets. Insane how like we went fifteen years ahead in two years. And there's a ton of potential for the work from home jobs that want to have families. Want to live in more rural places. I just moved from Ben because he got too crazy. Should have moved to Mitchell, could have bought a lot more land. But my family lives there, so I wanted to stay close to them, but. I mean, there's huge reasons for sort of like this growing middle aged family type. You know, speaking of myself, they can't afford to live a rural lifestyle in central Oregon. So where are they going to look? The outline communities and I, I, I think we got to figure out an incentive approach. To bring people here and see the benefit of a small town.
Depending for that already. But I, I will say, I just moved at a meeting last. Wild horse, rural development, Michigan brought in. The keynote speaker was from Iowa who's saying that. Like the top ten reasons that people are now, they're, they're moving to these places, but in the top ten reasons, employment. Isn't even on the top ten. It's people gone, this lifestyle and they're willing to commute long distances.
For what, the problem is. Where we know what.
Well, and I think it, it, it would really help to get a perspective. From the state perspective of where those funding structures are for Mitchell as well, uh, when it comes to affordable housing, and I know that there's. Um, resources that we could connect you to, but that's also reaching out to, I believe it would be Owens and someone, right? That rep, Senator Finn, Senator State and Owens. And asking, cuz they're gonna be keyed into where we are keyed in more to federal issues, they're gonna know a lot of the state funding structures and.
So they, and if you guys haven't met Brett Owens yet, you really should, cuz he's like skyrocketing.
And this is where. We're going. Our founding lawyers, so over here on this side of the river, the county puts so much money in their side of the river.
It's fossil, the county seat.
Yeah. And spray.
Spray, they're, 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 they're like buddy buddy, and when it comes to Mitchell, like, we had, we had our council meeting, and Brian brought some business over there. One of the county commissioners was here, and I'm like, didn't see you there, and he wasn't here to watch what we were doing, he was here to meet with. And it's like, I've invited him a couple times to see where we're at, what we're doing, things like that. And, and, you know, just from a state perspective, it's like every time, um. It, it's so hard for us being so small to compete, cuz we are legal and same as all time. Small city is considered under five thousand less, well, there's numbers that show there's like a hundred and seventeen cities with less than twenty-five hundred people. And I, I think, and I, I talked to Pat Mogo about it, and she goes, wow, what happened, but the restructuring of. The numbers of cities for competing grants, I mean, there's no way that we can compete with John Day or, or any other city that calls them a small city. Um. I think that would give, you know, our, our smarter communities, you know, more equal.
More competitive.
A more competitive edge, I mean, we're, we have other issues going on, but we're, we are working on. And of course, you get from the February, and he can't go and say, hey, make some things a road's pay, you know, can you talk to, you know, but. It is, it is, um, when you do have people up. The food chain, get ahold of somebody, things start to happen, I mean, because we, our finger project. Um. It stalled, and all of a sudden, we, we selected the right person, all of a sudden, we had. Hmm, we go from not knowing when our engineering's gonna be approved, to like three months later, it got approved.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, it's good to have contacts, definitely, because one phone call. Or an email, however, then it's like, oh, wow, you got it. All of a sudden, you know, what, four years, we don't know four years, this project's actually.
You don't know where to start.
No, because we're, you know, our hands are tied, but not, 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 our resources are tied. Not only by the amount of people that we have available to do these things, we don't have the money to do these things. You know, we're, we're barely scraping the, you know, make payroll every month, really, so, um.
And yeah, and a lot of this state-owned stuff too, so it's.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's definitely.
If we, we didn't get another governor, so we got Team Tote, which I know you guys still have relationships, but I think. A lot of it's affordable housing stuff, that funding, it, we have just as many, if not more, issues for affordable housing. And availability that's grown, or as we do.
Well, there, there's, again, there's so much state money and federal money out there that doesn't affect us, almost, you don't. We have one, one.
One.
To be that way over twenty years.
Yeah.
Um. You're not a main power or race. You don't.
I continually talk about the equity and diverse stuff, right, like, it's about socio. Color, gender, or any of that stuff to me, cuz oftentimes I feel like rural Oregon gets left out, not because we don't want to diverse. But because we're not included within socioeconomic status, I think that's something that continually needs to be. Incorporated into this discussion, because you don't have a socioeconomic class. I don't think you have the same resource availability.
What I will say about this is that you guys are very actively involved, and that matters, and if, and if. Your senators, state senators, and you get Owens and Finley, and they realize that. Hey, we have a group together, we're actively involved, we wanna see change, you're gonna see a lot more people being involved, so I will say that, like, kudos to you guys, I mean. You're sitting here at four thirty, five thirty, six o'clock at night on a Tuesday, trying to develop a plan to help. Your constituents, and I would say bringing more people into the room to have that discussion would, would help just, and even. Uh, sharing contacts, you know, bringing these other people in to, to show that you guys are actively trying to do these things. Um, would be really beneficial, and, and they're seeing, you guys are willing to be here and work towards that, cuz some people, either cities or not.
Well, well, that'd be amazing. Cuz you see in the room, most of us, you see in the room are all about things. I guarantee you, uh, over half the town. Love to see a win in, yeah, nobody else ever moved here, don't need them, don't want. And that is the town, when you have that, I don't know what you're talking about. Guy got made into, he was going off on from the actual study, being enacted twenty years. There it goes.
That's a great point.
And so that's what council will have, yeah, is, I don't know, yeah, and then here are three generations.
I don't wanna see a change of debt.
Yeah.
I don't even know if it's fifty percent, I think it's a very local, small. And, uh, it's a small percentage, but they're very good.
Right, they're all equal.
Good night, thank you.
I'm gonna grab some cards for everybody and write my cell phone. You guys want.